If you would like to stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, undailed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Tonight, we are here in City Hall Council Chambers at 389 Spruce Street, second floor, Morgantown, West Virginia, 26505. Today's Tuesday, July 1st, 2025, and it is 7:01 PM. I'm going to skip down to the roll call. Joe Bugannon? Jody Hollingshead?
President.
Wheezy Michael?
Here.
Jenny Celine?
Here.
Danielle Trumbull?
Here.
Mark Downs?
Here.
Brian Butcher?
Here.
At this time, I would like to open the floor for nominations for mayor. Are there any nominations for mayor?
I'd like to nominate Joe Bugannon.
Here. I'd like to nominate Danielle Trumbull.
Are there any other nominations? Okay. When I call your name, speak the name of the person that you would like to vote for mayor. Joe Bugannon?
Joe Bugannon.
Jody Hollingshead?
Danielle Trumbull.
Wheezy Michael?
Joe.
Jenny Celine?
Joe Bugannon.
Danielle Trumbull?
Danielle Trumbull.
Mark Downs?
Danielle Trumbull.
Brian Butcher?
Danielle Trumbull.
So we have three votes for Joe and four for Danielle. Congratulations Danielle. You're a mayor. So we will switch, and you can do the deputy mayor. I'll leave my paper here.
Do you want me to do it from here and then we can switch? We will now open nominations for deputy mayor. Are there any nominations for deputy mayor?
Nominate Brian Butcher.
Are there any other nominations for deputy mayor? Okay. Do I do the roll call for this? Joe Bugannon?
Brian Butcher.
Jody Hollingshead?
Brian Butcher.
Wheeze Michael?
Brian.
Jenny Celine?
Brian Butcher.
I will also vote for Brian Butcher. Mark?
Brian Butcher.
And Brian?
There's only one choice, Brian Butcher.
Guess we could have just said yes or no. All right, we will pause to rearrange ourselves.
Should we do the oaths first, and then that way when we sit back down?
Sure.
So what do we put?
I'm not sure.
We put seven slots.
I wish it had come up before.
You would go here, that's easy.
I think, yeah, I think I'll just be in between you, one, two, three, one, two, three.
I'm trying to figure out where we sit in order.
I state your name.
Danielle Trumbull.
Having been elected to the office of mayor in the city of Morgantown and the county of Monongalia, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the state of West Virginia, and the charter of the city of Morgantown, and I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as mayor to the best of my skill and judgment.
I will.
I state your name.
Brian Butcher.
Having been elected to the office of deputy mayor in the city of Morgantown and the county of Monongalia, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the state of West Virginia, and the charter of the city of Morgantown, and I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as deputy mayor to the best of my skill and judgment.
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mine looks like a toddler, doesn't it?
Do this. I state your name.
I'm Jody Hollingshead.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the state of West Virginia, and the charter of the city of Morgantown, and I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties of office of council member for the second ward to the best of my skill and judgment.
Thank you.
Great job, Henry and Kate.
They need the best cheerleaders for our run on Friday.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, well. Not all of us, just you, you were just elected again.
Yeah, you were elected.
I was. That did contest an election.
I state your name.
I'm Jenny Celine.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the state of West Virginia, and the charter of the city of Morgantown, and I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties of office of council member for the fourth ward to the best of my skill and judgment.
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So we sign.
Joe?
Yes. Try Butcher. I state your name.
I'm Mark Downs.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the state of West Virginia, and the charter of the city of Morgantown, and I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties of office of council member for the sixth ward to the best of my skill and judgment.
I will.
Congratulations.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, would you mind if we grabbed a quick photo of the mayor and the vice mayor? That'd be fantastic, appreciate it. Maybe?
I know.
Uh, yeah. There would be great, you know, you get that. You're such a fucker. We want to make sure we get the best of it.
Did you get one? Did you get a good one?
You got one.
Everyone ready now?
Yes, we're ready.
All right. We've already done all this other stuff. We are past roll call and on to approval of minutes. We have the June 17th, 2025 special meeting minutes and the June 17th, 2025 regular meeting minutes. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none approved by acclamation, or did we decide we're not doing that anymore?
Guess we're not supposed to.
I wasn't here.
Was it, okay. All right. Correspondence, we have no correspondence, we have no public hearings. Brings us to unfinished business, which is boards and commissions with the start of a new term of council. We have council representation shakeup for some of our boards and commissions. So I will read the list that was discussed earlier today and if we can just approve by acclamation of council. Jody Hollingshead will now be the council representative on the Urban Landscapes Commission. Mark Downs will join Jenny and Joe on the MMMPO. Jody Hollingshead will take over the council representation on Historic Landmarks Commission. Brian Butcher will take over as council representative on the Housing Advisory Commission. Wheeze Michael will take over council representation on the Traffic Commission. I will take over city representation on the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors. Mark Downs will take Dave Harshbarger's seat on the Morgantown Utility Board, and Mark Downs will also replace Councilor Butcher on the Morgantown Parking Authority Board. Does that sound like what we discussed earlier today?
Yes.
Approved by acclamation? Great. That brings us to our public portion, which shall be subject to rules established by council and adopted by resolution, generally allowing four minutes to speak. Please no personal attacks or anything of that nature. We do have a sign up sheet, after which anyone else is welcome to speak. The first member of the public to speak is Annie Cronin-York. Again, please state your name and address for the record.
Annie Cronin-York, representing the Human Rights Commission. Congratulations to all the new faces. Great job. I'm hoping this means a clean slate, start over, do things whatever we're supposed to, because there are several things that the Human Rights Commission specifically is supposed to be doing that we haven't been able to, or had our time doing, and so I'm hoping that we will do better at that this time. We're charged with meeting with the city manager to over diversity and inclusion. We have a DEI plan that was passed in 2019 and 2020 maybe. And my understanding from the previous city manager was that no reports have been filed since 2020 on DEI, patalatal, and we have nothing to work with. And so, the state of West Virginia is not too excited about DEI. We still have it on the books. Human Rights Commission is supposed to be working on it, and we can't have to turn through reports being done. So I hope we can get that going. We've got ADA compliance ordinance from, resolution I guess, from 2015, and I'm having a hard time getting anybody to enforce the ADI codes. I hope that will change as well. Republic refuses to pick up my recycling at 520 Go Count Us personal loan. It's been sitting there for another week. The anti-bullying plan was put in place several years ago, and 2020 as well, 2019, and it called for Bo Park and the city library to present plans of how they're going to enforce the anti-bullying policy that were due to city council within 30 days. I have asked for said planes. Ain't nobody's heard of them, as near as I can tell. So, if they are, they're great, I'd like to see them, and if they're not, can we get them? The anti-bullying ordinance requires Bo Park and the library, because I think you're the only two who do youth-sponsored programs in the city, that you must have a policy of how you're going to handle anti-bullying claims, or bullying claims, I suppose it would be. And, so, I think that the Human Rights Commission is supposed to have a written copy of those. Also, the anti-discrimination addendum that belongs to all city contracts. The last time I talked to somebody who'd know these things, the question was, "What?" And I sent the email out many times. I've sent out many emails. I'm not able to even picture anybody opening them, because I don't get responses to them. So if I'm supposed to be working in city council, and the Human Rights Commission is supposed to be working, it will help if we get a means of communication set up. I would appreciate that very much. My red light is coming, I've got 50 seconds. Also, I am a tad concerned, I spoke at the last meeting about the rule of law and the importance thereof, and over the weekend, I popped some things on social media that were concerning, not because anybody did anything wrong, but because it looks really bad. Hashtag quickest quorum. I know what it's for, it's for your running competition, and that is fine, and it's great that members of city council are doing things together, but it doesn't sound good and it doesn't look good. It looks as if there's a group of four that has a quick quorum and are going to decide in advance. I only bring it up because many people send me copies of the post, I do not look on social media myself if I can help it, and I am concerned for the optics of the city. Enough said, thank you.
Next person, Marty Schimber.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome, city manager. Joe, thank you for your service as mayor, you were great. And congratulations to all the new folks here. I hope you can hear me. I'm coming to you tonight to ask for your consideration on a few items. On April 1st, I asked you for an update on the economic impact, as we had an impact as the POTA, the impact of the POTA on our city, which was implemented a year ago in May. The councilor shared an email from the assistant city manager that the police had no reported problems, some establishments still had POTA cups in supply, and extra litter was addressed by the city ambassadors. Councilor Trumbull then relayed the message in council meeting. To date though, no one has addressed the economic impact of POTA. Has the revenue from alcohol sales increased or decreased? Have business sales increased with this change? Has it attracted more people downtown? I think that you should be collecting data to help measure this program. On June 4th, I contacted Carol Allen at the city regarding the one foot plus high grass of the East End Village site. I wasn't sure whose responsibility it was to maintain this area. It was finally cut about 10 days ago. However, there is a section of high grass in the curve on Richwood Avenue in the parking lot across from the Richwood property that's part of East End Village. The owners of the parking lot have cut their grass all the way around it, and again, we have grass that's hot. So, not only there, we have a lot of weeds, overgrowth, dirty mattresses, and trash at the old Richwood Grill that need cleaned up. So that's all a part of that property. Would like to see that cleaned up. If you drive Richwood Avenue, you'd see it. Also, the Woodburn Community Center is being covered with invasive vines. Most disturbing are the vines growing into the brick areas that were repainted a couple of years ago. I did point this out to the assistant city manager on May 28th, and she said that she would forward that onto the facilities team. So far, no action's been taken, and the reason I know this is the school's literally in my backyard. I look out my porch and I see Woodburn School. I've also noticed that the facade is coming off the front of the building and needs addressed. The last minutes of the Woodburn Commission were from February 27th. There are agendas for March and April, but no minutes or angel reports, which I would think that would be something the commission would have brought up and discussed. Just a reminder, the purchase of the Woodburn property was a big deal, a real big deal for this city. It was a building and also four acres of property purchased by the city for $490,000 from the Board of Education. After 100 years, it remains an anchor of the Woodburn community. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, Stephanie Hunt, 220 Front Ave. First off, congrats, everyone, awesome, and welcome to, we're so happy to have you. And I want to give a big shout out, we got the streets on Arch and, the lights on Arch and Green Street, they're all on, that's awesome. Thank you so much to everyone who was involved in that, it was a huge project and a big accomplishment, that like, we have lights now, that's really cool. And I would love for all of you to consider approval for the bid on asbestos sampling for the demolition of the houses on Pennsylvania and Brookway, because that's really the biggest hurdle we have towards getting our first green space in Greymont, it's in the name. So, we would love you guys to approve that, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, I'm Leslie Nash, I now live in Fifth Ward, which is very exciting. So I'm actually here today to talk about, or raise a question about something that is, comes up pretty commonly in my life, which is the accessibility of drinking water on the rail trails around here. I bike a lot, I run a lot, I spend a lot of time outside, especially in the summer, and as I'm sure everyone is aware, it's been like, pretty brutal the last couple of weeks here, and we have a real dearth of drinking water on our green space, in our green spaces and on our rail trails, which is a shame, because we have like, a really incredible rail trail system and greenway system. It's probably the best of any city I've ever lived in, but, and I'm happy to be wrong here, so if there are water fountains I don't know about, I would love to be informed of them, but so far as I'm aware, we've got a water fountain on the Mon directly downtown, next to the pavilion. There's one at Star City over by where Terra Cafe is, and then there's one at Mile Marker Four, as you head towards Pennsylvania. We have another water fountain that's towards Fairmont, between mile markers 10 and 11 on the trail, and that's it until you hit Fort Prickett, 19 miles away. Similarly, on Deckers Creek, there used to be a water fountain at Marilla Park, which has been out of service since they've been doing construction over there on the new pool. I don't think they put in a new one over there, and I haven't been to the end of the Deckers Creek Trail, but I've been 15 miles out and haven't found a water fountain. So I will say, I understand that a lot of this is not in city, like, not in the city, I get that, but there is a lot of this, a lot of the parks, a lot of the green spaces, a lot of the rail trail, that is in city limits, and we do not have drinking water for people who are with their families, with their kids, people who run. families, with their kids, people who run, people who bike, people who, you know, spend a lot of time outside. We also don't have many water fountains in the city itself. And for a city that does a lot of outdoor activities, you know, you have the farmer's market, you have the arts fairs, and, you know, the moonlight markets, all of that. There's no drinking water, really, accessible at all. We don't have anything in the core upper echum unless you walk all the way up to the hill, which is like, at that point, we're at the top of the hill. So this is just, you know, saying, like, one of the things that I enjoy most about the city is how much access to the outdoors we have. And I think it would really be beneficial to people who live here, people who use our recreation areas, and people who visit, even who are just walking along the river, walking around downtown, if we had more places for people to get drinking water, I think especially in the summer. But I'll say in the winter as well, it really sucks when you guys turn off the water fountains in the winter. I understand that there's issues with pipes and freezing concerns, but like, again, there are plenty of cities that keep water fountains running in the winter and keep bathrooms open in the winter. So it's just something I really think it would be who the council to consider. So, thank you.
Debate. Who goes next? Hi. Sorry, I never know when to start. I know, you tell me that every time. And I'd like sit there and watch it. It makes me really nervous. Yeah, I got you. I got you. I'm Lindsay. I live in Mayor Trumbull's ward. Congratulations, Danielle. And congratulations, Mark and Jody. I'm so excited about this new majority we have on council. I think there is so much potential. And in the lead-up to you all joining council, I've just been dreaming about all the exciting things that I think we'll be able to do together over the course of the next four years. So I really look forward to working together with you all. I'm gonna, there are so many people that want to help, really, and welcome, Jamie. We're so, so excited to have you. I'm just gonna have Brennan, Miles, Danielle, Sophie, Leslie, raise your hands. All of us are so excited to get to work with you all on policies and ideas to make Morgantown the incredible, inclusive, accessible city that we know that it can be. We've been coming here for over a year, talking about things like water accessibility, talking about how to make Morgantown a city that works for everybody, doesn't harm our neighbors regardless of what their socioeconomic background looks like, where they live, where they sleep. And so I think one thing I want to do is just talk about some of the things that we came a year ago talking about, that we wanted to see more of in the city. Things that are all really doable and would benefit everybody, not just low-income people, not just people who sleep outside or find themselves sleeping outside, but people like Leslie, who are maniacs and run, which I can't even begin to understand. But people like Brennan and me, who ride bikes, people who walk around town. And those things are things that look like 24/7, 365 bathrooms, not just the one down by the amphitheater, but we need more public bathrooms. We can't just have that one. Good cities have lots of accessible bathrooms. I know Councilman Butcher has a bathroom prototype that I'm sure he would be excited to show you all. That is like virtually indestructible. The city of Asheville, North Carolina, I think, has embraced it. So you should ask him about the bathroom prototype that he has. I think he'd be happy to share that around. But we need more places for folks to be able to go to the bathroom. I myself have found myself out on the rail trail and been like, dang, I need a bathroom. So we need more places to access water. I think many of you know that for last summer and now again this summer, we're doing a hydration station project out of Monkey Wrench Books and also in partnership with the library, who's allowing us to have coolers set up their space, where we have volunteers coming every day and putting out ice and ice water and Gatorade, which is great. That's one, a lot of plastic bottles. Two, it's a lot of effort. Wouldn't it be way easier if people could just roll up to a water fountain and be able to fill up a water bottle? We need more storage. That would benefit everybody who's using the rail trails, who's using anything downtown, if we have places to put their belongings. We need bike racks. There are almost no bike racks in downtown Morgantown. There are actually very few bike racks on the bike trails that we have, which Leslie said are amazing. Like, we have lived in lots of different places. Our bike trails are an incredible asset. We need more bike racks, and we need more places to sit. Those can be pieces of art all over our city. We need more infrastructure that is welcoming. And those are just things that we're lacking all over town. I'm running out of time, but I wanted to talk about how the camping ban is being implemented. But I actually think there are some council members, maybe on the report out, who could talk about some of the things that they've seen related to the ways that the camping ban is absolutely not working, or maybe is working exactly as it was intended. So I'm hoping maybe some of those council members will do that. The last thing I'll say is that we need a cooling shelter. Other cities have that, or at least either dedicating funds to, or, I had the United Way reach out to me. I'm a bookstore, y'all. I'm not a service provider. They asked me, the United Way reached out and said, "Are you a cooling center?" No, I'm a bookstore. I'm a for-profit business. And like, we're happy to help folks who need help, and anybody can come to the bookstore and cool off. But I am not a public service provider. That is something that you all should be working on proactively, way before it gets hot, right? Or way before it gets cold, when we're talking about the winter months. And so I think that's, I know, I think that's a huge need in our community. So I look forward to working on those things with you all. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak before we close the public portion? Okay, we will close the public portion and move on. We have no special committee reports. There is nothing on our consent agenda, which brings us to our new business. Item A, consideration of approval of a resolution approving and authorizing to submit the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development fiscal year 2025 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. Thank you, Mayor. We have Ms. Robin Hess here, who will present on this item.
Hi, everybody. Congratulations, Mr. And everyone. This is the time of year where we come before you all with the Community Development Block Grant. The resolution, I'm sure, was in your packet and kind of tells you what, it's usually the regular one that you guys get just about every year. This year, I have to say that once you all approve this, Mayor, you will need to see Christine, and she'll put your name in, and she'll have you sign it and everything before I send it out. The same thing will go also with most of the federal and state grants. The new city manager, I'll have to change all of the names, as well as the mayor's name will have to be changed. So I might need you all to, I'll probably be bugging you in a little while to say, okay, state funds are usually, it's usually the mayor that signs for me, and then the federal dollars is from the city manager. So that's something we need to get together on. Also, so just kind of give you a heads up. The federal, the, I'm really kind of excited, because this year, we actually had some new nonprofits who applied for grants, and they were able, we were able to fund them. We have Meals on Wheels. We have MSAP. Danny Trejo does a wonderful job. And this is a type of, he doesn't have to apply every year, like all the other nonprofits do, because there was an agreement put together many, many years ago, and Jenny, I'm sure you probably remember this, between the county and, at that time, I think it was the teen eight, teen drug court. And that has just kind of blown up into other things. And, you know, he does triage and counseling and this type of thing. So that's something that we automatically give CDBG monies for. And we will continue to do that. This year, we had Legal Aid of West Virginia apply for something, which is going to be an attorney that's going to be helping rental people who are having some problems with their landlords and this kind of thing. So we're really kind of excited about that. Also, we have, let's see here, who did I miss? Oh, okay, Health Right applied this year. They haven't applied for probably about seven or eight years, and they applied this year. And we're gonna be doing prescriptions for them. And also Meals on Wheels, which we started with the Meals on Wheels program two years ago, when we got a million-dollar COVID monies from the state for a grant. They were really, really good at, you know, their distribution of their, their food program. And in fact, over 16 months, they, we, they gave out, we helped, the city helped give out 20,000 meals, which is really good. That, I think the city should be really proud of that, because we got a lot of good publicity on this, plus the fact that, I was really surprised that I got a million dollars from the state of West Virginia for the grant. So I think we did a really, really good job on that. But, and then we have the general administration part of the CDBG grant. This is, it's not really to pay for salaries. I am allowed to reimburse the city for an intern. But that's mainly for the city for feasibility studies, you know, just any kind of, that kind of situation we have and everything. And then, of course, we do have the CDBG consultants. We do, you know, pay out of that as well. So do you all have any questions on the new, the new grant that's going out, like tomorrow? It has to be sent out. That's the other thing. Normally, our grants are supposed to come out. We're supposed to have the money as of July 1. But since COVID, we haven't gotten any, anything. It's usually hits probably, once this all goes in, because this is usually started in February, and this is now July. We won't hear anything or get monies until October. So it's really kind of back about six months. It's behind. It's been like that probably for about four years.
Move to approve.
Second.
Questions for Robin or a discussion?
Yeah, unfortunately, the plan wasn't, the actual plan wasn't included in our packet. So even though City Manager provided it, once we talked about that, provided, I haven't had time to review it. You know, I trust you. But I'm interested in a little more detail, if you can offer it on the Lower Greenmont.
The Lower Greenmont? Um, Lower Greenmont, that monies is going to go toward the Land Reuse Commission is working on a sidewalks, kind of a green space down there, and kind of cleaning up the area and making it a good entryway. I live in Greenmont myself, so I know what it's like going up the hill, coming into town with what's going on down there. And we're hoping that this monies, which will be, which is separate from the original $2 million we got from Congressional Directive Spending, this is another section of that. And it'll be also for acquisition and tearing down the houses and this kind of thing.
Okay. Is, is, are the sidewalk, is the sidewalk area associated at all with where the, we're looking at demo, we're considering demo coming up on the next item?
Yeah.
And the park?
Yeah.
Okay.
All that is. Yeah, that all goes towards, it's kind of a continuation of what the original Congressional Directive Spending is. And so that will be kind of working into that. And we also, in talking with the administration, we've also started talking about, Wheezy, you'll like this, sidewalks. So from this point on, a lot of the CDBG monies will be used for sidewalks and walkability and this type of thing, in the low-moon income areas, which includes the downtown. I think this year, we have put in here, I think, $83,000 for that. And I'll see that you get a copy of this.
I have one now. Thank you.
I was also frustrated it wasn't in the packet, but after the city manager sent it out this afternoon, I was like, oh, I have seen this before. So.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for Robin or discussion amongst council?
Thank you, Robin, for everything you do. You're awesome.
Thank you. Just make sure you sign it.
I'll sign it. I'm good for it. I just practiced two times.
The only thing is, I would say, as long as I abstain from this vote, my wife works at MSAP, so it's probably not good for me to vote on this.
Okay. All right. Christine?
Yes. Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Jody Hollingshead?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Jenny Saleen?
Yes.
Mark Downs?
Yes.
Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Brings us to item B, consideration of approval of bid call 2025-16 for asbestos sampling and demolition of 570 and 635 Pennsylvania Avenue and 637 Brockway Avenue in restoration of land.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Mr. Ricky Jaeger will be presenting this item.
Nice to see you again, Director Jaeger.
Nice to see you as well, Madam Mayor. Congratulations, everybody, on council, and welcome to have you on board. So the city received four qualified bids to demolish the three properties that you just referenced in the Lower Greenmont neighborhood. And staff is asking after review to award that bid to reclaimed company LLC in the amount of $60,500, as they were the lowest responsible bidder.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Thank you. Discussion or questions for Director Jaeger?
What's the timeline?
According to the bid packet, August 22nd is the tentative timeline.
To begin or to end?
To be completed.
Completed.
Yes.
Greenmont will be very exciting.
Absolutely.
It's a long time coming.
It's here. Any further questions or discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
Get to it. Christine?
Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Jody Hollingshead?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Jenny Saleen?
Yes.
Mark Downs?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Item C, consideration of approval to authorize grant agreements with the Federal Aviation Administration.
Thank you, Mayor. Director John Brable will be presenting this item.
Nice to see you again as well.
Congratulations on your elected positions tonight, and to the new council chair. So this item is a grant award from the FAA for an ALP update. So it's a planning grant. This ALP update, the FAA had asked us to submit for it. It is in addition to our last master plan, which was completed in 2012. The only reason we're not doing a master plan update, it's usually done about every 10 to, 10 to 15 years, is we're still working on that master plan. So the biggest piece of that master plan that we haven't completed is the runway extension project. So the FAA has asked us to do an ALP update instead. What this will encompass is a, a look at a safety change to the runway. They're looking at a few different options. They want us to look at a few different options that we can do at the north end of the airport by Easton Hill. Because right now, we only have a 200-foot safety area at the end of the runway. Traditionally, airports have 1,000 feet, which is what we have at the south end. So there's a few options we can do, and we're gonna consider those. One of those options is putting in a engineered material arresting system, which is probably what will wind up going in. The FAA will sponsor that. It'll become a safety project, and our funding will go to their highest level of contribution. So with that being said, that's one reason it was being asked for us to do, is so that we'll help with the funding of the runway extension as well, because they'll tie the two together and make it all safety enhancement instead of a capacity enhancement. The other pieces that the ALP update will encompass is looking at the other land we have available and the things that we're looking at doing to develop those. So for instance, we have two new hangars that have been built. One is complete, was built last year. We have one that's ongoing right now. Those are not on our, on our airport layout program. So those will get added. We'll also add some additional locations where we're looking at doing some commercial development, either hangars or other aviation development. We'll also be adding the location near the mile ground. We're looking at putting in a potential car wash or other type of venue there. So all of those will get incorporated, and it'll get FAA, not approval, but acceptance. And then we can move forward with any future projects on all those, and include the ones that we've already completed. So the grant amount that we're accepting is just under 400, it's $418,400 total, which includes our local match. This grant in particular, the local match is only 5% instead of the typical 10%. The FAA Reauthorization Act of last year dropped it down to a 5% match instead of a 10. So less money for us to have to contribute this year. Our contribution will come out of airport capital funding. Any questions?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Questions for Director Brable?
What's the, what's the anticipated timeline to complete?
Typically, planning projects take anywhere from Typically, planning projects take anywhere from six months to a year. Honestly, we have four years to do it based on the grant application, but we want to accelerate that because we want to help get additional funding for the runway extension project. So, we'll, we'll probably shoot from where that six-month timeframe.
Our contribution was what, 20,000?
20,000, yes.
Yeah, I mean, and that was kind of what, what I was, I was asking, considering, you know, we talked, as we talked earlier, the runway extension project is anticipated to be done by 2030, so if we're endeavoring upon a, a long planning process, that's going to make that even more difficult.
Exactly.
Okay. Thanks.
Sure. You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Christine?
Joe Bugonam?
Yes.
Jody Hollingshead?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Jenny Saleen?
Yes.
Mark Downs?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
City Manager's report, welcome, Ms. Miller.
Thank you so much, Mayor. As I am heading into Week Two, I just wanted to thank you all for all of the support so far. Thank you, Mayor and Deputy Mayor, coming off, and congratulations to those newly elected and those joining the diocese for the first time today as well. Wanted to start off just telling you all how fantastic the team has been in the last week plus. Truly a dedicated group of professionals who I really believe is wanting the best for Morgantown and serving with their full heart and full service, so a pleasure to get to work alongside such a great group of people. I couldn't be happier to be here. Thank you to the council for all of the great engagement today at the council orientation and training. Thank you to staff for the work put together to make that information useful and effective for everybody's time. Just a reminder of the Fourth of July celebration at the Ruby Amphitheater located at the Hazel Ruby McQuain Park. It is open to the public at 5:00 PM, but festivities begin about 7:00 PM, with fireworks planned to be about 9:45 PM. There'll be free concert, food and beverage, a fun zone, it should be a good time for everybody, and I hope to see you all out there. And then, final reminder is the offices will be closed July 3rd in observance of the holiday. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the City Manager? No? Report from City Quick?
Congratulations, Mayor Trumbull and Deputy Mayor Butcher, and thank you, Joe and Jenny, for your time the last year of serving as Mayor and Deputy Mayor. Welcome, Jamie, publicly, we're glad to have you. Quick recap of the Fire Civil Service and the Police Civil Service we've been talking about for months. We had our testing over the weekend. For the Fire Civil Service Commission, 29, there were 29 applicants, 16 showed up and 14 passed, so we have 14 moving forward to the, to take the written exam that's going to be at the end of July. So, good luck to those candidates. For the Police Civil Service Commission, we had 23 sign up. We had a few folks move to the October date, so a couple didn't show. We did have a withdrawal and a few no-shows, but ultimately, we had six pass the written, and a few have to come back this coming weekend to retake the agility, so it's typical what it's been in the last couple of years. So, we are having another police entry-level exam coming up in October, so that will be advertised as soon as we have that date. And then, I sent some emails out to you all, Mark and Jody, today about some upcoming conferences, so if you would like to attend, we do have the Municipal League Conference, the annual conference coming up in August, so it's here in Morgantown, and we've been meeting, we met once with the CBB and the Municipal League, and we will be meeting again tomorrow with the CBB to, and so Mayor, Deputy Mayor, if you would like to attend, it's at 3 o'clock tomorrow, meeting with the CBB to discuss planning. They did sponsor the conference. And then, moving on to November, the National League of Cities Conference will be in Utah. If you all would like to attend, let me know. And welcome again. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for the clerk? No? Report from City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome, Jamie, Jody, Mark. It's been a pleasure working with all of you already and looking forward to continuing to do that. We will be supporting the implementation of the action plan with your grant writer, Robin Hess, and the Urban Design Ventures, their consultant on those plans, helping to support that Greenmont green space as well as demolition of those structures. Also, after council's adoption at its last meeting of the amendment to your Tiff District Number Three, we'll begin working with the District Developer Campus Neighborhoods Revitalization Corporation on their future plans for redevelopment in the district, following that amendment and the extension of the district term, beginning with their first regular meeting following the amendment last week. And that is all I have to report to City.
Any questions from the City Attorney? No? I thought you were saying, no? Okay. Move on to report from council then. Counselor Bugonam?
Sure. Let me start.
We'll just go in order today.
Let me start by saying thank you all for the last year. It was an honor of my lifetime, considering that Morgantown is not the place I was born, but the place I chose to call my home, and I really appreciated that opportunity, and it is an experience I will never forget. And with that, I would also say welcome to our new counselors. I hope that your time here is as memorable as mine has been so far, and that's because we work with such wonderful people. And in that, I would like to say welcome as well to the team and look forward to working with you next couple of years at least. With the Fourth of July, I know you had mentioned the downtown event, but if you are afraid of large crowds, Jack Roberts Park is always a fantastic place to watch as well, that you can see the fireworks over the river from the field. And outside of the Fourth of July, I have been busy doing the summer camp, Summer Avalanche for the middle school, so my report is going to stop there.
Thank you. Counselor Hollingshead?
I just want to say thank you so much to the staff today. Our orientation was so informative and enjoyable, thanks to the wonderful people who work here. Though I ran unopposed, I appreciate all of the votes, and I don't take this position lightly. I'm very excited to serve, and I appreciate your trust and confidence in me, and I'm going to do my very best. Thank you.
Counselor Michael?
Jamie, welcome. Joe, Jenny, I want to say thank you. Joe, you served this city really well and always, always respectful, and it's appreciated, and I think we lost a really good mayor today. Jenny, as well, you've served this city really well. North Street, I want to talk about, in my ward on North Street, if we can maybe, I wanted to let my residents know that we are working on it and that I am checking on it for them daily, so, and I'll be up on July 4th, we'll be spinning it right on the corner of Raymond, the fireworks, so we could overlook the city by Wilds Hills. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Saleen?
Let's see. I really appreciate the entire day today with council orientation through the day, which took a lot of organization and a lot of work on behalf of everyone at the city, it appeared, and I appreciate just kind of like the flow of democracy, I would say, of how things work here, where we elect our new mayor, deputy mayor, the way that we have a city election, even though I was also unopposed. There was supposedly someone that was going to run, but then he never showed up, so I just, just very much appreciate our, our democracy in action, as well as all of you who have come today, especially those who are supporting a second, second representative. I just really have enjoyed being the deputy mayor and working with Joe Bugonam the last year, and the effort that he's put in to be kind of even-handed and work with a council that was obviously divided on a few issues, and just help make Morgantown a better place, and so, on to the next administration, see how, see how you all, you all, you all do, and I'm just very glad to be here, so thank you very much.
Counselor Downs?
Thank you. Let's see, Morgantown's special, that's why I did this, this is my hometown, I grew up here. I love here, I'll probably never leave, but, but I thought this community needed change, and that's why I put aside my personal interests and decided to run for council. I think we're seeing, I'm hopeful about that change, I think we're, today's a very special day. Jamie, welcome. I've known you a short time, but I consider myself a pretty good judge of character, and I can tell that Joe, Wheeze, Jenny, Brian, Danielle did an excellent job, so thank you all for that. In terms of priorities and change, I, I look forward to investing myself in, in growth. Our city has been chugging along, kind of just at a, at a normal pace, kind of flat, and I think we can do so much more economically, socially, environmentally. We have all the potential in the world. Annie, in terms of your comment, I appreciate your pointing out the, the social media post, and because I can see your point in how that was, could be taken out of context, we were trying to have some fun and, and do some team building, and I would do that with any one of my friends sitting here. We're all independent thinkers, and I hope that you know that. In terms of the camping ban, just to address the other comment that I think I have some recent experience with, and is it a, is it a product of the camping ban, is it a product of our current social condition? I think it's rather the latter, but I have some folks that have been camping on private property that I own, and I have been struggling very much personally with how to deal with that. Working with the Morgantown Police Department, working with my friends in social services, we have got to do something about housing, we have got to find someplace for these folks to go. And I know you all know that, I know you do, so, but we've got to do it. I, I don't know what to, what to tell these people, and I just can't bring myself to, you know, press charges, what do you do? So, it is.
Welcome to public service.
Terribly, terribly difficult, terribly difficult, so, you know, that's it. I think that's, that's, that's good for me.
Deputy Mayor Butcher?
Welcome, Jamie. I think we made the right decision too with Jamie, but I appreciate you being here, it was good to spend eight hours in this room together, listening to every city department, and thanks to everybody in all the different city departments for like, everybody put a presentation together, obviously, there was like a template and stuff, but for them all to like kind of lean in and talk about the challenges that their departments face, or, you know, just what they need from council, the history, the things that they do, it's a lot of time out of the day, and I really appreciate people who stuck it out with us and administration for sticking it out with us all day, you didn't necessarily have to, so I appreciate that. We did, and maybe, I, I don't know, I wanted to ask you this later, Wheeze, but maybe we can just ask now. They, we talked in the, earlier about the pole attachments got moved on North Street, but is it, has it moved anymore other than that?
My understanding is the utilities are done?
Yeah.
But the road's a hot mess?
Okay.
We've got safety issues.
Okay. I was just making sure that.
Yeah, my, I, if you're referring to Comcast?
Yeah, the Comcast was moved.
Pretty sure, I think, am I right about that?
Oh, they just, they stepped in there. Yeah. It's in sidewalk, and then they'll get back to the finishing of the pavement.
I have to say, guys, I'm, I'm so glad this is coming to an end, this has been a very long process, so, and, you know, that's, that's a good thing.
Yeah, for sure. I just wanted to mention and talk about quickly that Wheeling was hit with like another devastating flood in between our council meetings. They've, I believe, found eight people dead in Wheeling now, I believe they found one in Marion County. We were talking earlier today, I think it was Joe who said, when are we going to stop calling them 100-year floods when they happen every year? And so, we've really got to start thinking about and planning for these kind of disasters in our community. I know we had floods, you know, not that long ago in Jenny and I's neighborhood, and, you know, my kid still like gets a little nervous when it starts raining too hard, you know, and so, yeah, we've really got to make sure that our water infrastructure is planned for thousand-year floods with the way climate change is going, because those people in Wheeling are really hurting, and, you know, anything we can do to try to prevent that, make sure that we have emergency plans in place to make sure that we can get people rescued if they end up in a bad spot is good. And to that, there is an event at Morgantown Art Party on Saturday, the 12th. It's called Hell in High Water Flood Relief Benefit on Saturday, July 12th at 5:00 PM, so people can get out there for, for that. And then, yeah, the last thing I'll say is just on, on the camping ban, so I had spoke with some people at the Coalition and homelessness, so there was two individuals that recited with the camping ban, I believe different than who you were referring to, but they've lived in Morgantown their whole life, and their offer of shelter was the fair, was a shelter that's not accessible, I don't want to necessarily blow that up, because if this shelter was like aware of the fact that we were sending people there, they would probably not be too happy about it, and it was out of town. And so, I don't know how that necessarily qualifies as an offer of shelter, I mean, technically, I guess it does, but I, this is what I kind of was worried about and things that I was talking about when I said like, we're putting our first responders in a bad position where they have to respond to these things in ways that don't necessarily meet the needs of the people that they're talking to, and also create a lot of bad externalities that could really harm other communities and our own in the process of enforcing this. So, we need to be, make sure that we're being very careful about the kinds of things that we're like referring people to and how we're referring people to them, and how also that is impacting people's. is impacting people's relationship with the city and the police and everything else when these sorts of things happen. So, I just want to flag that for people, that I know we're in a difficult situation because we don't have any shelter beds, but this is the problem, right? So, we should get on figuring out where to, how's these people, where to get the money for it, the partnerships we need with the county and WVU to make it happen, and make it happen. And that will conclude my remarks.
Do you mind if I say one thing?
I just wanted to make mention, as council members are meeting with Jamie, keep in mind that this is your opportunity. So, we did a little, just a few blocks through the downtown and walked in and said hello to some of the merchants, which was really fun. They were really flattered that our new manager was on their doorstep and saying hello. So, whatever it is that you'd like to have talked to a couple of different council people that have other things, issues, whatever you're, whatever you feel is important, it's a nice opportunity to showcase that, be it a walk, be it a walk to lunch, however you want to frame it. But it's, I really appreciated that I was able to take a little bit of time, and not too much time, because we wanted to get all our other work done, but that was a nice way to start. So, I just wanted to say also that I appreciated that and your ability to be here. Thank you.
I had the opportunity to meet with Jamie very briefly. She, I invited her and her family to our Mushroom Trail kickoff event, so we got to chat a little bit there, but I look forward to having a longer meeting. Maybe I will take her to H3.
Right, that would be.
I sit on the board at Hazel's House of Hope on behalf of the city, and I can tell you that a lot of the service providers there are feeling very overwhelmed. I think that people who are given warnings downtown are just being told, go to H3 despite the fact that there are no beds available. So, then we have a lot of loitering issues, that some of the other service providers there are not super appreciative of, we're working through, but we are working, Grace Shelter has a plan for adding 15 more beds, but those come at a cost, and they are looking for funding for that. We are also working with Catholic Charities who runs Grace Shelter right now, writing a couple of grants for build-out of the last space at H3 that is not yet habitation.
Habitable.
There is part that was damaged in the roof, the microburst that took off the roof that is still not built back to habitation standards, but we are working with Catholic Charities that would potentially provide, I believe, up to 26 beds of transitional-style housing. So, H3 contracts with a grant writer, and they are working with Catholic Charities, who is undergoing a change in leadership at the shelter as it is, so that's kind of hit a little bit of a speed bump. They're still moving, but waiting to see who will become the new director of Grace Shelter. Yeah, it's a tough time. But I do appreciate Jamie and Emily and Christine and Ryan and everyone who put together the council onboarding today. I think it was a little bit of repetition for some of us, but I certainly had the opportunity to ask a lot of questions of some staff that we don't necessarily interact with super frequently, so it was definitely useful for everyone. And I do look forward to taking a few field trips that we discussed, like with the airport and a couple of maybe Public Works projects that are underway. I look forward to getting an update on Walnut Street. That was something that we spoke about today, and I'm told that there's a meeting with the contractor and DOH tomorrow. The businesses along Walnut Street and throughout a lot of downtown are hurting because of that area that's still blocked off with a stall and work. So, hopefully, after a meeting tomorrow, we have some additional answers to give them because I know I have a hard time walking into a lot of the businesses downtown that are owned by my friends, that I walk in and they just want to yell at me right now, and it's very difficult when I don't have an answer to give them. So, hopefully, we can get that moving again. Just say that this Friday is the fireworks and concert, as was mentioned, but it is also First Friday for the arts in downtown, and that is still happening at all of the usual venues, I believe, except for maybe the History Museum. I think we heard today that the History Museum will be closed because our Arts and Culture Department's a little busy with our fireworks and stuff. But everyone else would certainly love a visit on your way to the fireworks. Next Saturday, the 12th, is the Arts Walk in downtown Morgantown. I believe that is 11 to 3. Should be a good one. A lot of people signed up, and we did have the kickoff for the Mushroom Trail event that was entirely free for anyone who came, aside from Kona Ice, I guess, and the, a lot of volunteers put a lot of time, resources, money, energy into that trail and that event, and it was great. There were at least 125 people in attendance, I think closer to 150, but I'm not looking to exaggerate. If anyone is so inclined, we will be doing our next service project this weekend. Saturday at 10:00 AM, we will be meeting under the South High Street Bridge to finish scraping vines and loose paint from the bridge pillars and doing the priming. And then, on Sunday at 10:00 AM, we will be doing slightly artistic color-blocking painting on the bridge pillars to cover a lot of the graffiti that's been there for a long time, hopefully spruce that up a little. Thanks to the city manager's office for working with us and Public Works to get the paint for that. We are using colors that will coordinate with the mural that will be coming onto the back of South High Station later this summer, early fall, so I think we're really tying that whole area together, I hope. Other than that, I look forward to serving, continuing to serve the city, but in a new role over the course of this year, and working with staff and other council to hopefully move some things along and get some projects done. So, if there's nothing else, we would entertain a motion to enter executive session.
Move to enter executive session for discussion of matters protected by attorney-client privilege pursuant to West Virginia Code 6-9A4B12. Thank you.
Second.
All right. We will take a brief break and go into executive session.